I guess before we get a minute before we start, I just talked to Brian. He was on his way back to the hospital. We said it wasn't good. She's been over to the hospital, but they may be able to bring her home tomorrow. But they did tumor wrap around her colon or something like that. So they had to do a colostomy or whatever. And but there's something over in Pittsburgh, December tenth. Some kind of special treatment trial or something that they're supposed to be scheduled to still go. They have to try to do, you know, that might help and stuff. So but he said, you know, say sorry, didn't call earlier. I said, don't worry about that.
He ran home to pick somebody up, take somebody from school. I don't know. That was what he ran out of here to do.
Five thirty, all yours.
Okay.
I'll just go ahead and bring up the accounts that are in the rears. You're more than welcome to look at that and pass it down. And that will be submitted to the auditor for public accounting for collection. I guess, you know, we're going to start off with talking a little bit about Franklin Avenue Waterline and the booster station. This is a picture of the new booster station going up that will provide water to the east side. It'll give us a dual feed and also save on electricity pumping to the east side. In this picture here, they're putting on a sub roofing that will be put on. If you guys remember, I discussed last time about this being real close to the electric lines. And you can kind of see in this picture where the electric lines are, where these guys are handling metal and so forth. But we did get that straightened out. And I think I mentioned it last time, everything seems to be on the up and up and going the way it's supposed to be. There's an easement there, but it's a real old easement. Doesn't exactly say, I don't know how old the easement is, but it's old. So but anyway, we got it worked out with the AEP and the construction's moving along.
They got the insulators on that line there, Kyle. They've got the insulators on that line.
Yeah, they went ahead and made them put all the insulators up and anything like that.
So they did call you back?
Yes. They called me back and we were just waiting around. That's another picture. That's actually, I got some of these slides out where I got to put this together pretty quick with the holidays and everything. But that's another picture of the building that's going up.
What's the location of the building?
It's on Lickingview Drive. Right as you go around the corner, right before the wastewater plant, if you're headed towards the east side.
Oh, okay.
As you go around the corner there, so.
Right where the old small brick pump house used to be.
And we tore that one down and then put this in. This kind of gives you an idea of the block and the block, they did an excellent job on the block work. This is split face block. They'll have like another color that kind of goes around, which is kind of resembles our other buildings and stuff that we had at the water plant and so forth. That's a repeat. Things are moving along on the water line real well. They're starting down Franklin Avenue. I know, I'm sure Doug, you've probably had some complaints and so forth.
Not really.
Really, not too bad?
No.
They are actually now down, getting close to Hopewell Drive with the main. Today, they were supposed to be working on the tie-in with Joey and Elizabeth there.
The only complaint that I did have was that some of the people were concerned about how the roadway was tore up, whether it was going to be, you know.
They're still telling me they're going to pass that back this year.
Metal plates are going to be gone before?
Yep, they're saying. They're trying to get as many of these tie-ins done so that, you know, they can do them all in one time. So, you know, wherever you see like a patch, it'd better bring them in and try to get as many of them done as possible before the bad weather. So, you know, they're still making tie-ins and different things. So they're waiting till the last minute.
The things I get are, yeah, they don't want to go for a whole winter.
No.
Playing dodgeball with those plates. A lot of guys are driving on the left side of the road just to avoid it.
Yeah, a lot of people.
They really are. If there, I mean, if there's no traffic on the other side, that's what they're doing.
Forget the double yellow, they're just, they're driving on the left side to avoid it.
Hopefully, we'll get most of those passed. Of course, I talked about hazel and ethyl, those are, that's completed. Where they tied them in, that's all been seeded and graded. Everything seems to, everything seems to look pretty good there. It's a good company and I'm sure they'll put everything back the way they're supposed to put everything back.
The key's going to be when do the asphalt plants close? Do they have any information on that?
You know, they just told me that they would, they would patch as much as they can before the asphalt's closed. And they're kind of in a hurry of doing these tie-ins and but they assured me that it's supposed to all be patched. But I'll talk to them again tomorrow and make sure we're all on the right track.
I think they asked for Columbus a year round. It could cost a little more, but they'd get it around.
Was that right?
Yeah, yeah. Bring them to Columbus if they have to, but. That's actually, they're pulling the line there and it's pretty, like I said, it's pretty neat. Here's what they weld on to the end of the pipe. And then there's a connection right here. And then they'll drop that down in the hole and they'll run that reamer and they'll connect on to this. They'll back ream as they're pulling the pipe along. So this is actually welded on here. And they pull it back, it's amazing. This is the inside of the pump building. We use some glass block to save on electricity. So when you walk in, you don't have to turn on lights and so forth during the day. You can kind of see what's going on. This right here is the pump pad. This is the discharge line from the pumps. And it's a, it's a nice little building. That's a picture of the ceiling going up and it's open. Over top of this, this is where the chlorine room will be. It's actually on the opposite side of this wall right here. We will put in, they will put in a roof on top of that. But the rest of the pump building will all be open, but the chlorine building will be sealed off to, from the rest of the electro, electro chlorine or anything like that. There's a picture of the door where they'll bring the pumps in. Also, if we have to remove a pump or rebuild a pump or anything like that, we can back right up to the pumps and take them out and load them onto the trucks or wherever, whatever has to be done. Has anyone else got any concerns or anything about what's going on with Franklin Avenue with the water line? We'll go to the water plant improvements now. Water plant improvements is under engineering now. What got accomplished this, actually this month and last month is we held the kickoff meeting on the thirtieth of October. Then, and we performed a pump test with the systems of the city on the high service pumps. Survey was completed the week of eleven twelve. So they actually did surveying at the plant. Soil borings was obtained the week of eleven nineteen. And major equipment vendors, budgetary quotes that were obtained. We began sizing new high service pumps, the engineering firm did. And they started, I actually started working on the drafting of the plans, the specifications and everything. Next month, on the water plant improvements, we'll work, I'll submit forty-five percent set of plans and specifications for review. Those, they'll be, I'll get the review and the employees and so forth. And we'll see how the plans look. Submit high service pump designs, alternatives. They'll evaluate power connections for new high service pumps and continue remaining detailed design work. And then they'll also submit, once they get, I think it's fifty percent, they will submit those plans to the EPA for preview for their permit to install EPI. Any questions on the engineering at the water plant? We're currently removing lime from the lime sledge lagoon behind the water plant. This is something that's done. We're just starting a three-year contract. I'm a little bit disappointed that they aren't working, they've had a change in personnel from what they had. Of course, we didn't find that out until after they got to bed. But things seem to be moving slower for some reason. I don't really care for that. But they have, they've had plenty of equipment there and everything, but they've had some breakdowns. Their tractors and so forth that broke down. That's actually the lime lagoon. And this piece of equipment here to the left is the pump that hooks on to a tractor. They drop that down inside the lagoon and they mix it. And then they'll try to get as many solids as they can haul away. Solids concentration has been a lot higher this year. Instead of around twenty-five, twenty-four percent solids concentration, this, they've been getting out about thirty percent solids concentration. So it should mean less trips and so forth on disposing the lime. Then the lime gets applied on farmer's fields and.
Same outfit that's done for years?
We've had several. The last, Cinegro's the one that did it three years ago, so I had to contract three years ago. We've also had Birch Hydro, we've also had a company called Polcat. We had another company that we ended up getting a lawsuit over. And I can't even remember his name for sure, but there's been several in and out here. But Cinegro overall has done the best job for us.
Price is comparable for this three year?
Actually, this three year was cheaper than the last three years. And we're moving here.
This is Cinegro.
This is Cinegro. Yep. That's another picture of the tractor and the pump and so forth. And then they'll drop that in there, they'll pump it out of there on, in a hose and it goes through the trucks that I showed you. They'll fill the trucks, then they take a sample out of every truck and put it in a five gallon bucket. And then they don't know when we're coming to collect it. But we will kind of mix it up a little bit. And when we get down there, we'll mix it, collect the sample. And then we send it to our lab at the wastewater plant. And then the wastewater plant, that does the solids concentration test. Any questions on the lime lagoon claim? Okay, I don't know if you guys looked in, saw on the paper, but Sunday, we're giving a test for water distribution. We were expecting to fill two slots. This was all tentative before Sundays when I made this up. But there is definitely, the test will be given on December fifteenth, two thousand twelve at the Heath Middle School at nine AM in the morning.
And applicants should stop and see Debbie and get a packet of some kind?
That's, yeah, I mean, you'd have to read that. I think I did have a copy, but I might have to. I'll see it right offhand. I think they would come here and say, yeah, pick up a packet. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of interest in that. I completed the, I did, went ahead and did the test and turned it in and come, that's been a couple of weeks ago now. And I think I might have mentioned that.
John, question. Do you want to generate more interest? My staff sends out our email blast to job seekers.
Oh, yeah.
It goes to about three thousand people.
Sure, love to do that.
Okay. We can, you can email me.
Yeah, I'll try to email that or get a test with Debbie Whitefield, maybe she could email it to you.
These openings are replacing boot?
The guys have retired. What happened was we had.
Moved a few around.
Yeah, we had two retire from the wastewater. And the two guys at the water distribution transferred into the wastewater plant. They will, that hasn't been done yet.
Carl and Shane?
Carl, Shane.
Shane, Vera B and Carl, those are.
Carl had, Carl has his water three license. Took the test for wastewater one, what, earlier this month, right? Shane, earlier this month, was taking the test for water three. So if he passes that, both of them will be maxed out in their water licensing. Working in the wastewater plant, if they so choose, they would be able to work toward wastewater licensing, which would enable them to become dual certified the way the John is. Which would be more marketable for them as individuals and for us as a city having a resource, more flexibility for us to manage.
So you have two positions for this task?
Thinking so. Go ahead and get in the wastewater. The gen aeration system is up and running in number two digester. This is actually the stainless steel header that goes in that, I think I showed you last time. It was piled on the side of the building there. This is actually installed.
Sweet, right?
Yeah, yeah. The pump itself is actually in sweep this way. So the flight pump. The header system is, was built locally here, though, I think. They had a lift to get in and out. I went down inside and checked for, for everything that could possibly be wrong with it. Made sure that everything was level because you have to have everything level. Has to be good and secure on the header system. These are some of the tie-ins of the, of the header system. That's another picture that I took before we got everything started. Now, what's nice about this is, is it's using, not only before we just used air, now we're actually using a pump. So we're moving the product plus adding air at the same time, which should be more efficient for our lime sledge that will be hauling on to farmer's fields and so forth. I wanted to kind of touch base with you on the pump. That's the flight pump that was installed, the new flight pump, there'll be two of those put in. There's one on this side and then on the opposite side, there'll be another pump. That's the pump that's from sweep, flight, which we try to use all flight pumps. That's the pump on the opposite side that'll be installed. That has not, that's not underway yet because you don't see any of the piping heading in towards the digester like, like that. But it is up and running now. Everything looks good. The process went real well. And we actually, this was when we were getting ready to start things up. This gentleman right here is Chris Kirsner. He is the rep from Flight and also Fluidyne, which supplied the header system. And he also made sure that everything was okay. He's checking out the electrical system. We had a local contractor do the electrical for us. Best, best electric, I think, was the guy who came in on the lowest bid. And that's that gentleman right there. And that's, you'll have to get on Nick. That's Nick sitting down right there watching everyone else. I'll work on the system.
So is the other digester now empty?
It's, it's empty. It's tore apart and we're ready for them to come in and start that. And what I'm hearing is it'll be next week before they come in to start that on the second digester. That's kind of what the digester looks like before mixing. There's another, that's when we were filling it up. Like I said, I don't have these in real good order. This is actually the mixing process. Kind of looks like that. As you can see, when, when you don't turn on the air, this is the air being added to it. But if the air was shut off, it actually, you'll see this spinning from the pump. It mixes it. And then when you hit the air, you hit the aeration in the middle. So we're real happy with it. I know Dan and all the employees and stuff seem to, I think everything's worked out real well. Any questions on the generation system updates, the digester? Okay, also, we're working on today, and I know I kept the mayor busy signing papers and stuff today. He was in meetings today and I had to keep knocking on the door and asking him to sign stuff for me and I hated to interrupt him. But we started obtaining utility easements to get rid of the Fox rental station. And we have three easements. Two of them have been signed. And the third one we're working on with, that was a rental place, I always forget, Sunbelt Rental. I've been in contact with that gentleman. And then we will, once we get everything, actually Dave prepared all the easements and stuff for me. I got the signatures and then we will take, once we get them all, hopefully, we get them all. Then we'll have them taken down and recorded, recorded. So I didn't know what the outcome would be after today, but so far, things went pretty smooth with the landowners and stuff. The Gaul family is still upset about the pump station being in their front yard on Hebron Road. To the, I don't, they said that they weren't informed that that's where it was going to be. This kind of unusual, have a generator in one spot and a pump station in another spot. I don't know why it was done that way. But anyway, it was. But they seem to, we seem to get everything worked out.
By, by was, do you mean that's the way the current situation exists? Or the way that the new situation will exist?
The current situation is, and it will maintain that. Normally, your generator is with the pump, with the lift station. And what they did was Sunbelt Rental, they put the generator. And then in front of Mrs. Gaul's house, they put the pump station. And why it was done that way, I still, I don't know. I mean, I tried to ask Dave, which was during his tender, and he couldn't remember what the exact situation was on that, why it was done that way.
Who engineered it?
James Henry.
Why don't we ask them?
I should.
You know, they've got, they've got a head record of it.
But it would cost us a fortune to move it now.
Well, yeah.
It's going to stay towards that. But yeah, I, yeah, they can find out exactly why. I do know that's the location where that gentleman was killed. When they had the cave in, I don't know if it was.
Well, it was on down.
Was it on down further? So it didn't probably have anything to do with it.
It was on the other side of the rental place driveway.
So I don't know why it was engineered that way.
Ask them, maybe a very good reason why.
Yeah, I'm sure there is. I'm sure there's a reason. Also, I went ahead and working on, I kind of want to mention that we're trying to repair the line behind the post office. Like I mentioned that last meeting to you. Dave's got the easement real quick for me going on that. And it is in the, Quest Heath Woods. I guess that's their new name now, Quest Heath Wood.
Weren't you going to do like half of it this year and half in the spring?
Yes, that's what we're trying to do. Trying to break the money up a little bit so it's not so draining on the budget and so forth. So hopefully, that gentleman's due in this week. So hopefully, we can get that underway and so forth. Utility easements, any questions? Or utility on the quest? We had an annual inspection at the wastewater plant. This is something that's done every year. It turned out real nice for us. The purpose of the inspection was to evaluate the compliance with terms and conditions of our NPDES permit.
What does that acronym stand for?
NPDES, National Pollution Elimination, National Pollution. National Pollution Discharge Elimination System or something like that. But it's, what it basically does is it's the permit that allows us to discharge into the stream.
Okay.
And we get a permit every five years. And then a lot of times, the maximum contaminant levels can change. I know right now, they're binding down on mercury for us. So this NPDES has a stricter mercury level than the one past five years.
Go ahead, John.
What are the charges for business?
We, there's no charge for business. But for that permit, it's five thousand dollars every year to have the permit. They call it a, I just turned that into a narrative. It's a, we're paying it now. For next year, it'll be five thousand four hundred dollars, somewhere right in there. And we also have that in the watering. You have to have a license to operate a water plant, and that's around five thousand.
So the annual inspection includes the permit fees?
Permit fees and the whatever, you, they, you, I don't know.
Makes it free if you pay it five thousand bucks.
Basically, it's, you know, you'd say it's a moneymaker for, I mean, you know, all the different things. All the wastewater systems, you know. It's according to like, on the water side, it's how many taps you have. On the wastewater side, it's flow, I mean, I think flow enters into it a little bit.
Sure, there's no pun intended, but it's what you call trickle up economics.
Yeah.
If you know what's trickle up, okay, if I don't report that.
Yeah, I'll learn. But anyway, the permit, compliance data, we only had two violations on permit effluence, effluence, I'm sorry, for that. Date between twelve one eleven and ten one twelve. No permit effluent code violations, no permit frequency violations and no compliance scheduling violations. The two violations that we did have, one was on mercury, the limit was twenty point two reported. The value was, the limit is twenty point two, the value that was reported was fifty one point six. Biz two, the limit was thirteen and we reported a value of nineteen. We determined that both of those were, when we, the mercury was not done properly with the lab that we used at that time. We've switched labs since then and our numbers have went way down. So we feel that was something to do with, with the lab. The biz two was something to do with collecting the sample. The company that came in and collected the sample for us, collected the sample wrong. So we redid both of these and it brought us down within the limits. But still, it was reported on that annual report, so. So overall, it was a very good annual report. There's some things we have to do in the lab, a little difference as far as quality control. What's unusual about the lab is the water labs are certified, the wastewater labs are not certified. So I, I think it's trending towards that someday, that the wastewater labs are also going to be certified along with the water labs. So the guys in the labs are getting more up to speed on quality control and, and different measures that have to take effect. Nothing major, but it was brought up that we needed to keep a couple more logbooks. Like I said, they always have to find a few things wrong to justify their jobs, really, I'd say. But that's the kind of way that, so sometimes you leave some of the obvious things out there. And then they stop looking after, I think, John. Anyway, yeah, everything went real well on the, on the, on the annual inspection and so forth. And I couldn't be prouder of the guy, the water, I mean, the wastewater guys down there, they're all doing a really good job on keeping on top of things and stuff. But you know, I didn't get any numbers from Linda this week. I know Linda came in and she's had a, she's been out with some.
Hoping maybe she'll be back by the end of the week.
So I'll update you on that probably next month and so forth. Other than that, we went over the delinquent accounts. I'm done, if you have any questions?
We, we need to, I think, discuss the wastewater rates and the trend that we're seeing relative to the model.
I was thinking about that and probably thought that I should have brought more things in. We originally had that the wastewater was going to decrease over, I think it was a four-year period. I think we're starting the third.
About two percent every year?
Yeah.
Is that sound right, Keith?
Yeah, I think so.
I guess.
That sounds about right.
That's what I recall here.
I think we're starting into the third year of that, next year we'll be.
January, yeah.
Yeah, the third year. Well, although we did a. Well, although, we did a, we had our people that go through our accounts and so forth, told us that in two thousand fifteen, we could possibly have a shortfall in the wastewater funds. If we don't stop reducing the wastewater rates. I know it's hard to believe, but when I've mentioned to other communities that we are reducing rates, they're kinda like in awe, like, you're actually reducing your wastewater rates? We, we did that to kinda level things out a little bit, but I think it's getting to the point now where we're gonna have to maybe put a halt on that for, for next year. Because we don't wanna have a shortfall in, in the budget in two thousand fifteen.
The model was based on a usage and growth that we haven't seen, that hasn't been, hasn't materialized. And so, if we continue to have the rate reductions, without the modeled growth that those reductions were based on, we're gonna end up upside down.
So, we'll probably, I don't know, do we have to do legislation on that?
Yes.
Okay, probably be having some legislation coming up on for, maybe, I don't know, doing December, maybe.
Submitted through finance.
Okay.
For the first meeting of December.
Okay. But I wanted you guys to be aware of that, and I know Mayor and I don't wanna see a shortfall with money, so.
Okay, anybody else have anything?
We just think if you leave it where it is, then you need to increase it.
Correct, we just need to stop the decreases.
We just need to stop the decreases.
Okay, six o'clock, we need adjournments, thank you. What'd you say? Stop the negative increases.
There you go.